This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to reopen the Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 22, 2021. We opened the, our meeting this evening at 6:00 and then moved to executive session with the motion to return to open after that meeting or at 6:30. We discussed a contract negotiations with the Harwich Employees Association and the Highways Maintenance Employee Association. The discussion with the Harwich Employee Association is ongoing. I'm pleased to announce that we have reached agreement with the Highways and Maintenance Employee Association resulting in the one-year contract retroactive, so it ends June 30th of this year. And included in that contract is a 1% one-year salary increase. With that, I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think, Mr. Powers, you said you have flag ready. Beautiful. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on your agenda is the COVID, our weekly COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Turn it right over to our interim health director, Megan Eldridge, for her update. As has been the case, lots of moving parts as we get into vaccines and everything else. So turn it right over to Megan.
Hello, Megan.
Hi, Larry. Good evening. I've got good news again. This year, this week, we have only had three positive cases in the last seven days. That's quite a decrease over the last, really, three or four months or so. That's, that's the lowest number we've had in one week in quite a, quite a while. I'd say two to three months now. Our, our cases are slowing down. We've, we've gone up to 563 cases since the beginning of this, which is about a year ago. Today, we are following only 13 active cases. So as of Friday, that number was 27, and as of today, it is 13. So our caseload's going down. The number of active cases is decreasing. Our positivity rate is decreasing. As of Friday of last week, it was 4.84, and I anticipate that being a whole lot less this time next week. We had 1,155 tests administered over a two-week period, and 51 of those tests were positive. So that means our positivity rate went down. We remain in the yellow. Another great week. We may go green and then eventually to gray. So this is good news for number of positive cases. I spoke with the school system on Friday, trying to get a game plan together for this coming week. We know a lot of people traveled over school vacation week. So they sent out a notice reminding people of the travel order and what their responsibilities were if they went out of state. So we're hoping people either stayed within the, the state lines or they have gone for a test or are quarantining on their own. Vaccine update. We have gone to the next priority group within Phase Two. As of last Thursday, the governor did open it up to the next priority group, which is individuals age 65 and older, residents and staff of low and affordable public and private senior housing, and any individual that has two or more of, of a certain medical condition. Those comorbidities are listed on the CDC website, on the mass.gov website, as well as the Harwich website. If you're wondering if you have two or more of those medical conditions, you can search those sites and find out if you qualify to be in this current phase of the distribution plan. We also received a letter from Secretary Sutter's, which is in your packet. It was a disappointing letter that went out to all local boards of health. It states that as of March 1st, the state is no longer going to provide first doses of vaccine to individual municipal clinics. We were trying as towns on the Cape to get more vaccine by individually becoming providers. So Harwich would be a provider, Chatham would be a provider, instead of going with the county model. And unfortunately, the state decided that that wasn't going to happen. They're, they're focusing on sending vaccine to mass vaccination sites. Those are the big ones at Gillette and Fenway Park. And now there's one, I believe, that started up in Dartmouth. Those sites get thousands of shots a day. And Barnstable County was getting 1,000 shots a week. And as of today, they're still getting 1,000 shots a week. With this new model that the state is going with, we have been told that if we regionalize, which we have been doing, but if we make it official with three to four regional sites on Cape Cod that are open every day, that we could have 500 to 1,000 doses a day for our Cape Cod regional sites. Now, those sites on Cape Cod, for instance, the community college is, we're thinking that will be one. The Fairgrounds in Falmouth, and then out in Eastham, there's a new mobile site that's at the National Seashore. Each one of those sites doesn't have to be open every day, but at least one of them has to be open every day. So we could have the Four Seas location open three days a week and one day in Falmouth and one day in Eastham. It will at least increase the number of vaccines we're getting on the Cape to a daily number rather than a weekly number. And unfortunately, things change week to week. So until this is actually official, we, we can't say for sure that this is going to happen. But this is the plan so far. This, this letter said that vaccine will only be going to regional clinics that have collaborated with their surrounding towns. So one would think that we would be included in that. They are also ramping up supplies to retail pharmacies. Those are the CVSs, Walgreens, and the Stop &amp; Shops. They are eligible to receive vaccine, and they're able to get more vaccine if they want it now. So we should be seeing not only more clinics through county means or through Barnstable County, but we're also going to be seeing more shots available at these retail stores. One other piece of good news is Outer Cape Health Services has been able to obtain vaccine for their patients, but also they are able to vaccinate non-patients. So if you are in the eligible group right now, if you're in Phase One or Phase Two in the first two eligible groups in Phase Two, and you haven't been able to secure a vaccine, you can give them a call. They are trying to set up two days a week for onsite clinics, and they are also able to help homebound or vulnerable populations that can't get out of their house easily. So thankfully, Outer Cape Health has stepped up and, and they're, they're providing shots as well. So if you haven't had any luck with the, the mass back sites or the local clinics, give Outer Cape Health a call, and they, they may be able to accommodate. Additionally, I did learn that CareWell Urgent Care in South Dennis also has vaccine. That's kind of a information that I received, not through official channels, but it is actually true. It wasn't an announcement, but at least two people I know have come to CareWell, called them, and gotten an appointment to get a shot there. So that's another option for shots. In your packet, there's a couple of charts on vaccine doses shipped and where they're going. As of last week, we have received 1.2 million doses of the vaccine. And it's hard to look at the number of only 225,000 that have been administered. You know, we, we wonder why only a quarter of them have been administered. The others are going to second doses right now. So we were on that little pyramid where we've gotten a lot of people their first doses, and now we are waiting to give second doses. Barnstable County, they were showing that we had quite a few, a big percentage of our population that's been vaccinated so far. It was in the 13% or 14% of our population. And we have asked Barnstable County to find out where they're, they're getting that number. We don't feel that 14% of our population's been vaccinated. We have a feeling that some of that number is from the long-term care facilities. We feel they're including that number in the general population of percentages of people who have been vaccinated. We've been working with Council on Aging through the Health Department in the town, and Outer Cape Health is working with the Council on Aging to keep up with our homebound population. We are making sure everyone who is homebound has been identified, so they're able to get a vaccine if they're looking for one. So once again, if you or yourself, or someone you know is unable to leave the house easily, make sure that you have contacted the Council on Aging here in Harwich, so they can get you on a list for a homebound vaccination. And the Council on Aging has been hard at work getting a how-to, step-by-step document together for residents to try to navigate that massimmunizations.org site. That's the site that all of the clinics are listed on. So when you're looking for a shot, you can go to mass.gov and search for, for the vaccine finder on the map. And when you find a location near you, you're taken to a site to sign up. And it can be overwhelming, especially for people who have never used that type of internet service. And the Council on Aging has, has started training some volunteers to help walk people through that process. At this point, they can't sign you up themselves, but they are able to sit on the phone and walk you through the step-by-step process. That's been a little difficult because it's hard to get an appointment right now. So by the time you get a real person on the phone to walk you step-by-step, all the appointments are gone. So we are, we're hoping in the next several weeks, we'll be able to be able to have more appointments available, so we can help people get through that process. And we are talking about a helpline that is focused just for Harwich residents. And I see that Molly Mitchell is on the, the line today. I thought I saw her jump on, but Yes, I see her too. And she's probably more able to tell us all where we're at with that. It's, it's in the works. I think it'll be a good thing to help people sign up for appointments once we get to the stage where there's enough appointments to sign people up for. And then lastly, testing is still free at Outer Cape Health. Cape Cod Healthcare is still offering seven-day-a-week testing. Travel testing is not free, just so everyone's aware. You do have to pay out of pocket if your testing is not due to an exposure or feeling symptomatic. The community testing center is, is open. They, they are testing at Cape Cod Hospital and several other locations across the Cape. And usually, when you call, you can get an appointment the same day. That is all I have for you on COVID.
Thank you, Megan. Any comments or questions for Megan? I, I agree, Megan. I was a little disappointed waking up and hearing that we're going to have two new test sites on the Massachusetts, and neither on the Cape. So
Yeah, they, they have the, the state has provided more testing centers in the areas that they feel have the, the demographics better, that haven't been prioritized in the past. So they're, they're going to other, other communities that they feel are, are more greatly impacted by COVID at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. If there's nothing else, Joe, I'll turn it to, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll turn it right over to the Executive Director of our Chamber of Commerce for Cindy Williams' update on the business community.
Great. Thank you all very much. Good evening. A couple of things. We have a new business going into Harwich Port. I wanted to thank Megan and Katie for helping guide them through some of the Health Department things that they'll need. It's a new soft-serve ice cream. It's called Seagull's Ice Cream and Soda Fountain. It'll be going next to Hunter's and Reed Books. It's in the front part where Bonnet's Bakery used to be. So that'll be exciting. Met with them. They joined the chamber right away and even took an ad in the new magazine. So they're getting right involved in the community. So thank you, Megan and Katie, once again, helping the new businesses. So I appreciate that. As I mentioned last week, we have new, three new marketing initiatives for the businesses to get them out there. We started scheduling the videos for our restaurant show, as well as our hotel and ends to promote and prompt people to book vacations. And then also starting the Small Talk with Local Businesses videos. So those hopefully will be up in the next week to 10 days. We'll have a few of those on the Harwich Chamber YouTube channel. And other than that, things are still moving ahead. Great news on the numbers. So I think we'll see maybe some of our, hopefully, fingers crossed restaurants in hibernation coming out and opening up. So thank you, everyone that is doing what we're supposed to, being safe and smart. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Cindy. One, one fact, there's never, there's never enough ice cream shops in town, so.
We've got something for everyone now. We've got, you know, last year, Sweet Izzy's opened, and they're gluten-free vegan and all kinds of great stuff down there. Now we have soft-serve, and they're going to be having a specialty that's called craft soda. We know that there's craft beer, but now there's also a craft soda. So they're going to have some great, unique things. So it'll be a great addition to the ice cream shops that we have in town.
Good. I'm on board. Joe, back to you. And anything else in this segment?
Nothing under this, but there is a late pause of an announcement to be made under the next agenda item. When you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
I'm ready now for public comment.
Under public comments or announcements that ask our cemetery director, Robin Kelly, she has a great update.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Robin.
Okay. So this morning, I have received confirmation back from arbor.net. So I'll just read you what they had sent to me. Harwich, Massachusetts, the 22nd of February 2021, the Marceline Arboretum at Island Pond. And Harwich has been awarded a Level One Accreditation by Auburnet Arboretum Accreditation Program in the Norton Arboretum. For achievement in particular, standards of professional practices deemed important for an arboretum in botanical gardens. The Auburnet Arboretum Accreditation Program is the only global initial initiative to officially recognize arboretum at various levels of development, capacity, and professionalism. The James G. Marceline Arboretum is also recognized as an accredited arboretum in the Morton Registry of Arboretum, a database of worldwide arboretum in gardens dedicated to woody plants. So we're fully accredited now. We're on their website. And I just want to thank everyone, the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen, and everyone in the community that has supported us. This has been a huge group effort. I talked to the Montemoy Regional School District today, Mark Smith, and he's very excited about this. We're partnering with them to do a lot of programs there for the children. And thanks to Amy from the Conservation Department and AmeriCorps. They've been great. But thank you so much for helping us guide through this. It was, it was totally free application for the town to do this. It just was a lot of paperwork, and I appreciate all the support. Thank you.
The accreditation came quickly, didn't it? Which I, I think proves it was, it was well done, putting it together in a way that
I have, I've been emailing him back and forth for the last year, showing them different segments and asking them if I was on the right track. So they were aware of all the paperwork that we were doing.
I'm sure all of us are very excited and proud to have Jimmy Marceline's name on that as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Robin. Great work.
Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? If not, that's a, that's a nice public comment. Do you have any others, or should we move on?
We're gonna end on a high note. Oops, sorry.
John? Yes, John?
Hi, Larry. I'd like to make, just to, I don't know if this is the appropriate spot, but I'd like to, this is concerning that the note I sent to the Selectmen and to the town administrator on Friday about the joint meeting of the department heads.
I think, Joe, you want to bring that up towards the end when we talk about the schedule? Or you want to bring that up now?
That's fine. It's going to be discussed under the budget later on. Yep.
Quite sure. Okay, that's fine, Larry. Thank you.
No, we certainly want to discuss it. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, moving next is annual committee presentations, and our first is Waterways Committee. And Tom, I know your name's on the report, so you get to, you get to speak.
I go first. Am I right for a while?
It is.
All right. Good evening. I'm Tom Themistus, and I'm not sure if I should be losing my legal name, which is Themistically Themistus, but I'm, I'm Tom Themistus, Chair of the Committee for the Waterways Committee. 2020 was a challenging year for our committee, as with all committees in town. We missed a few meetings because of COVID restrictions. In addition, we lacked the quorum for a couple of months because we had resignations of membership from the committee. The committee is now at full membership, and our virtual monthly meetings are well-attended. We are looking forward to getting together in person again. Despite the many challenges associated with COVID-19, the 2020 voting season was extremely busy, and managed in a safe and effective manner, thanks to our harbor master and his efficient staff, along with the cooperative spirit of all ship, slip mooring permit holders, and general bowling public who complied with the marine-related mass COVID-19 orders and guidance. We really appreciated that. For operations, the Harbor Master Department responded to a total of 37 maritime assistance cases during 2020, a combination of disabled boat toes, vessel grind, groundings, a boat dewatering, recovery of people in the water, which is surprising, and medical issues. On a positive note, this was a 35% decrease in the number of maritime assistance cases compared to the previous year. Dredging and beach nourishment. Allen Harbor had their annual channel dredging performed, and the sand from the area was piped to the various beaches along, along the sound. The, the town was awarded a mass dredging program grant in the amount of $36,000 from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development to fund a portion of the Allen Harbor Channel dredge project. Witchmere Harbor Channel was also dredged this past year, and the material was trucked to Red River Beach. Our revenue, the Harbor Master Department generated 1.38, 1,386,000 in harbor and waterways-related revenues in fiscal 2020. This is $126,000 increase from fiscal year 2019. Projects that have been started or in process, Round Cove Boating Ram, a competitive general bid, was awarded to Robert Hour and Company for construction services for the reconstruction of the Round Cove Boat Ram. This project will be completed prior to May 1st, 2021. The Allen Harbor Jettie Rehabilitation, which as a, as a resident of this area, I'm happy it's in the process, GEI Consulting has been contracted to perform a site investigation, required permitting, and concept and final designs to repair the Allen Harbor West Jettie, which leaks every year. Tendative construction period has been pushed to fiscal year 24 if construction funding is approved. As an aside, I'm answering some questions that were raised in my request to participate. Our member attendance has been good. All members have been sworn in. The state ethics testing is a work-in-process. We are, we have at present just two members have completed the certification, and we're working on the others to complete it. We are posting our agendas monthly before monthly meeting. We are posting our minutes after the subsequent meeting when they are approved. In closing, a special thanks to Matt Hart and Steve Root. Steve is an old friend of mine from Springfield, who have retired from the Waterways Committee this year after serving for over 20 years. Their contributions to the town and specifically to the Harbor Master Department in helping to upgrade our waterfront facilities and expand our operations and services have been tremendous and are so appreciated. Working with our Harbor Master, they left the committee in great shape. We have added Ken Drishella and Larry Brutey to bring our membership to seven and have Cameron Smith as an alternate. Respectfully submitted, Tom Themistus, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. I certainly want to join you in our thanks to Matt Hart and Steve Root. They participated in many years. Other questions for, for Tom? Tom and John, I have, and John and Jones here as well. I have, I have a couple. What I find interesting is the decrease in assists, down 35%. I've read from other sources, it seemed like overall, a lot of areas have had, with all the increase in boat traffic, problems have been, have increased. We seem to be going in a different direction, thankfully, but why you think that is?
John, you want to address that?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I, you know, I think one is because towboat in the area has become more active. You know, there's, they're out of Chatham, and they've got a couple of boats now, one in Stage and one over in Chatham. And so they're just more active in the area. So when we used to get calls for a boat tow or for a situation, many times towboat, commercial salvage company responds, which is great. But I also think, you know, just the, the case numbers were down because people are either being more prudent. You know, we do, every year, we do a public boating safety day seminar that we try to get out to the public, you know, prior to the start of the season, safety considerations before, before going out. And it's, we do it in conjunction with the Chatham Harbor Master and the yacht clubs and so forth. And, you know, I think that's beneficial, trying to get out. And we try to get on the water as best as we can to try to be a deterrent. But you just never know. But I think that's a combination of some of the reasons why.
Mr. Chairman? When I've been, when I've been out on my boat a few times, I've seen the towboat off of, off of Witchmere. So I don't know if they're just sitting out there waiting to be called or, or why they're out there.
Good. My, my second question is more financial. I read in the paper, I think, last week that the counties are going to raise their fees for the dredging. And I know, maybe, maybe two years ago, maybe two years ago, there's some discussion, I think, in Chatham of buying their own or regional. Guess my question is, will the county still be competitive if they, I don't know, they didn't say, I haven't read how much you're going to raise your fees. Was that a concern?
It's a it's a little bit of concern. I think one of the concerns is the timing of it. You know, we've had some discussions and we hope that they don't choose to raise the rates until all the communities and all the departments and towns have the opportunity to budget for those increases. Some of the increases, they're going to start to charge mobilization and demobilization charges, which right now that's all included in the per cubic yard charge that that they currently assess the towns. You know, the the county is very reasonable. I mean, I mean, they're a great deal and they continue to be a great deal and we've had great success using the county. And so it doesn't surprise me that they're going to increase. You know, they bought a new dredge. They're getting ready to buy another new dredge. They've had some equipment upgrades. So I know it's coming. I just hope the timing of it is right and that it's not, you know, a real significant increase.
Yeah. Yeah, me too, especially because we do support the county in other ways too. So they get you know, they get just specific fees plus support in general. So any other questions for John?
Can I just make one? If if I can make one comment, if it's okay? I'd just like to, on a personal note, a special thanks to Matt Hart and Steve Root as well. You know, when I first got here as a Harbor Master eight and a half years ago, having never worked in municipal, you know, role, they were key to getting me on board and they were big advocates for myself and for the department and they just did a lot of good, I think, for the town and I sure appreciate all that they did. So I just want to say that. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. I'm sure those comments are well appreciated. Tom, last words? If not, we'll we'll move on.
All set. Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Next on the agenda is update from the youth services.
So, good evening. My name's Meredith Henderson. I'm the Secretary of the Youth Services Committee. The Harwich Youth Services is a collaborative committee working with schools and the community to inform the public about resources, educational events and supports for Harwich Youth and Family. Our primary undertaking during the last three years has been planning and hosting middle school socials, alternating at Harwich Community Center and Chatham Community Center. During these events, students from grades five to seven come together to engage in fun and healthy activities such as Nerf wars, laser tag, hoops, arts and crafts, and many contests. The average attendance at these events was 100 students. The socials were chaperoned by parents, teachers and upperclassmen and women from the Montemoy High School. Unfortunately, the restrictions on social gatherings due to COVID-19 pandemic meant that we were only able to hold two socials at the beginning of 2020 and the students are looking forward to socials in the future. Other events promoted by Harvard Youth Services Committee feature featuring participation or hosting by the Harwich Youth Counselor were a showing of the document Angst, which shows the upward trend in anxiety disorders among youth and how to seek help for your child. Sharing information about the Alternative Peer Group Program for teens struggling with substance use issues. This is a one-of-a-kind program utilizing counseling and crucial peer support. And Sheila House will give some more information after I'm done with my overview on that program. There was also the Teens, Tweens and Quarantine. It was a webinar presented by John Matalman, former Director of Needham Youth and Family Services. John's a knowledgeable clinician and dynamic presenter who shared with parents the particular challenges the teens have that have been facing during the pandemic and how to support them and practice self-care. Sheila House, the Harwich Youth Counselor, saw a rise in referrals and case management this year due to the stressors caused by social isolation and anxiety during the pandemic. Sheila is involved with the following boards and organizations. Barnstable County Regional Substance Use Commission, Substance Use Prevention Council, Montemoy Regional School District Crisis Response Team, Harwich Children's Fund, the slash, the Friends of Harwich Youth, Behavioral Health Innovators. And we have some goals for 2021. We are hoping to bring Save a Life Tour, a Save a Life Tour presentation to the juniors and seniors at Montemoy High School to share understanding for impaired and distracted driving. We are hoping to support the Harwich Elementary School Nurses and Sheila House to present the Beautiful Me Self-Esteem Program. And we are also hoping to organize future middle school events with COVID restrictions when the COVID restrictions are lifted so that we can get some social gatherings back together. So that is all I have. If it's okay to turn it over to Sheila, she has some more in-depth information.
Of course. Sheila, welcome.
Buddy. First of all, I just want to acknowledge that Paula McGuire, who's been with us for quite a while and the board is stepping down, and she's been amazing. She's a long time special educator from Brockton and Dennis and we're going to miss her a lot, although I'll see her quite a bit because she's my neighbor. So and I just wanted to give you a little bit more information about the alternative peer group. Alternative peer groups started popping up in Texas and other southern states and have been moving up and out all over the country. And it's a very, very unique model because it's not, you know, conservative, strict, stringent drug and alcohol treatment. It's it's a peer peer-to-peer recovery model and recovery just means health. So it meets Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. Right now, virtually, there are three amazing young clinicians that are working with them. One is a recovery coach who is in recovery himself. And and it's just a program where kids can come and sort of take a look at. So maybe I'm just like drinking too much. Maybe I'm smoking too much pot. Maybe I'm, you know, the like, it's kind of getting in the way of my life at this point. It's not making me feel good. It's not making me feel the way it used to make me feel. And they can come and talk to each other about that with the guidance and supervision of these coaches and counselors. So it's really quite amazing. We've we've got a lot of funding from various, you know, big grants. We're partnered with the Duckie Health Center and about 45 kids have gone through. We're we're hoping to, it's in Hyannis right now when when it's live and we're hoping to eventually expand out, have have a site in Harwich, have one up in the Wellfleet area, et cetera. So it's it's a very unusual model and kids are responding well to it because they don't have to be perfect. They just have to be willing to take a look at what they're doing. So and then the Beautiful Me Program, Holly Tavano and Christine Mulhall, the nurses at the elementary school. We knew we couldn't do Girl Power, which is the program that I've been running with the Council on Aging for 10 years. We couldn't do that live because of COVID. So we want to be able to do something in the interim. So we got trained in this amazing self-esteem program for third grade girls, certain fourth grade girls. But in the offing is we're planning to expand Girl Power in the next two years so that simultaneously there'll be a third third grade Girl Power, a sixth grade Girl Power and a 10th grade Girl Power session going all year, all year long in school, like three or four sessions a year so that we can get them at different ages because in sixth grade, that's when they start to get a little bit more competitive and a little bit more, you know, having fights among themselves and stuff. And we want to be able to have them, you know, work together. And, you know, 10th grade can be a really challenging grade too because it's sort of in between. So we're very excited about that because we we'd like to collaborate with a couple of other nonprofits in town to write a big grant and fund that. So I'm very, very excited about that. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but those are just the two things I wanted to mention.
I see one, Don.
Yeah. Hi Sheila and the committee. Thanks for everything you do and speaking as a consumer, a past consumer of the Girl Power Program. It's outstanding if you're going to expand that. It was a terrific mentor-based activity and it had great results. And I think I commend you for doing it and hopefully when COVID passes, you can do the expansion.
I know. And I want to give a big shout out to, she's she's sitting with her mom, Meredith Annalise Langley, who's not only a junior member of Harwich Youth Services Committee, but she's on the Student Advisory Board for that Alternative Peer Group. And I just can't say enough about this kid. She's she's amazing. Other kids want to talk to her all the time. She's very nonjudgmental and very just just a great, great person all around, beautiful inside and out.
Wouldn't want to miss the other opportunities.
Mother needs, every mother needs some help.
Wouldn't want to miss the other opportunity, Sheila. So I assume that you collaborate all across the state with all of the youth counselors that are out there, right?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Well, there aren't many. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, there are. There's 85.
On Cape Cod?
No, no, no. There's only the my main collaborators on the Cape are there's a woman at Mashpee Human Services, but they don't do a lot of direct counseling anymore, but Falmouth Human Services. I talked to Susie Hoppman there. So but but we're Harwich.
But I'm giving you a big pat on the back.
Well, Harwich is still the big innovator with this model. So, yeah. And I'm just the lucky recipient of that in so many ways.
Ah, shucks. You're too modest.
Thank you. Other other comments or questions? I think I know, Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, great job to the committee. I see there's several members of the committee on here. Have a great job to the committee and and thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. I think we're all, every year, I think we're all always impressed with how much a number of different activities you have you have going on. So job well done. Thanks again. And we'll move into public public presentation by the Golf Committee, Director of Golf. Joe, did you want to introduce this subject and then turn it over? How you want to handle it?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, a few weeks back at one of the meetings, it was suggested that it might be helpful for the board or Roman and Sean to give an update on the the many projects they're working on, the status of those projects and the procurements that are coming up. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to our Director of Golf, Roman Greer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I did put together a brief golf course project and procurement update for your packet this week. And if you don't mind, I'll go through it very quickly. I do have a few updates since I submitted the packet on Friday. So project number one, which is our big one, is the Carp Barn project and there's various aspects of that that are still ongoing. Among those are the front of the clubhouse landscape project. The reason that's included under the Carp Barn is this is remediating the area where the former Carp Barn was demolished. So that's currently in progress with a completion date in mid-April. Sean and I were just speaking with our vendor, Bodich, expecting today and with the good weather trends, he's expecting completion by April 1st. That'll turn over the remainder of the landscape project to be completed in-house by Sean Fernandez and his staff, which will consist of plantings and lighting installation. The next phase is the solar project, which is currently, once again, in the final stages of completion and that's scheduled to be completed by the end of February. Everything's installed. We're awaiting final testing and commissioning of the site, a witness test and forever source to grant a permission to operate letter. We're expecting that all within the next week. So that's very exciting. Once again, that's a that's you see in the pictures that I submitted, that's a large ground-mounted solar array and roof-mounted solar array as well. And the next item for the Carp Barn project is the Charger Grid RFP, which we're working on. I included in your packet a design that was a photo of a design that was completed by an electrical engineer for the creation of this RFP. I was working with Griffin Ryder today on this and we're, we put together a timetable where we're expecting a bid opening on March 28th. The Charger Grid RFP. These items all kind of run in conjunction where we need the Charger Grid in place to support the electric carts. So I'm working with our procurement team once again on the procurement of an electric cart fleet on state contract. We expect to transition to electric carts this season at some point mid-season. The golf course, I'm sorry, the golf cart vendors due to COVID are all behind in production. So as soon as we order a fleet, it's expected to be a few months before they can provide it. So that's the items under the umbrella of Carp Barn. We also have a minor upgrade going on in our starter shed where we've created in the during the COVID crisis, a CARES Act funds, a remote payment kiosk. This is one of the really nice operational efficiencies we've learned during the pandemic where we're going to continue even beyond the pandemic with these operations, which include remote fee payment where we're currently using GolfNow and a remote payment kiosk where golfers that want to just pay their fees, such as cart fees and greens fees, do not need to come into the clubhouse but can check in directly to the starter shed where we have a window and a credit card swipers where they can just go basically directly from their car to the starter shed to the first tee. So that's a great operational efficiency we found in this past year under the COVID crisis that we're going to upgrade the that remote payment kiosk in order to make things just a little bit more customer-friendly this year. And that is funded under the CARES Act, those upgrades, as well as the position of the staffing in that kiosk. Through the remainder of 2021, the staffing of that kiosk is covered under the CARES Act. And then finally, the restaurant RFP, we had a bid opening today at 2 o'clock and I'm happy to say we had a bidder and it's the Hot Stove at Cranberry Valley, which has been our vendor for the past five years. So we have a committee that is going to evaluate the bids and we'll come to you with a recommendation shortly. And finally, we have ordered some pro shop displays. I included in your packet a design that we had created a few years ago where every year we're adding displays. This year, we hope to add the back counter display and a shoe inventory display. Once again, I included that design in your packet. I'd love to take a minute to thank our procurement team because this is a lot of work going into all these items. So Griffin, Joe Powers, Megan Eldridge, Carol Cola and formerly Bob Lawton. I appreciate all their help on all these procurement items. It's been a lot of work. So that's all I've got for the update. Please let me know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Roman. I I requested this because I think I wanted, we all want people to know that the golf course is not sandy still. There's a lot of things going on to for improvements, for efficiencies. Some of it pandemic-driven, but a lot of it's just good business sense. I would ask, I see Sean's on the video as well. I don't want to catch you off guard, but could you give us a brief update of what's on the golf course itself and maintenance? And I know in the past you've worked hard to get the Audubon Green Award and continue that. So if you could give us a brief update of what's going on there, that'd be great.
Sure. Basically, with everything that's going on with the season with COVID, we've been very busy, obviously, doing as much as we can to try to maintain the golf course to the high standards that we have set over the last couple of years. So each year we try to do a little bit, each each year we try to do a little bit more. And one of the big things that we've taken on is trying to become an Audubon sanctuary. And with all the construction that we've been doing, we're actually getting to that phase where we're almost ready to submit the paperwork so that we can get recognized. It's a long process, especially when you have as much as we have going on between the solar panels and then all the other construction we had going on. So it's been a task, but it's been it's been well received. And I think that it will put Cranberry Valley right where it usually sits, right at the top. So I think that when we're all said and done, we've reduced fertilizers since I've been there, which is definitely helping with the whole septic issues. We've taken on a lot of different challenges to try to continue the same process that we've done since day one. Just sometimes it has to be done in a different manner. So we're achieving the goals that we've set in front of us. And I think that hopefully you'll be hearing a lot from Cranberry Valley in the future with this, finally, the Audubon being becoming a sanctuary.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Comments?
Larry?
Michael? Michael?
Just clarification. Is the, was there only one bidder on the restaurant?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And so the bid process is closed now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And while we have Sean on, Roman, great job with the golf course. And I think the board received a lot of different commentary this year, some good, some bad. You know, I'm looking at, I look at your numbers based on pandemic and original forecasts. And you guys really pulled it off. You did, you did an absolutely amazing job keeping that golf course going and with some growth. So thank you. And Sean, hear constantly what a great golf course that is and how great the grounds are. So I don't think we could tell you enough, but thank you for all you do and your team.
Thank you.
Other comments? I don't think we're playing golf for a few days, but otherwise we'll move ahead. Next is new business. And first item is the Suckers Meet for January 21, 20. An entertaining motion to accept?
All right, so moved.
Second.
The second, is any discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next, I'll turn the discussion to you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're joined this evening by Counsel and Aging Director Emily Mitchell. Emily, as you know, has been the front person on the Human Services Grant Program for the town for at least two years, if I said that correctly. Emily and I have talked and she's interested in taking it to a higher direction, if you will, and expanding on the charge and the makeup, and looking to see the board's willingness to establish a Human Services Committee that would assist staff in the review of RFPs and the grant process in addition to others with other tasks. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it directly over to the COA Director for her presentation.
Hello, Emily.
Good evening, everyone. So I did include a recommendation memo in your packet. As Joe mentioned, for the last two years, I've kind of overseen this process. And the way it works now is that the town appropriates a certain amount of money every year to award to individual nonprofits that serve Harwich residents. So typically around this time in February, we issue an RFP and different organizations respond typically between 13 and 18. I think 18 is the most I've seen in the last few years. And then I put together a team of town employees, about five town employees, representing different departments with different direct experience with these organizations and serving residents ourselves. And we review the application materials and then put together a recommendation for your board to review. I think each time I've presented that recommendation to you, I've included a recommendation to create the Standing Human Services Committee. So this is kind of the next step in finalizing that recommendation. So in your memo, I outlined our current process and then what some of our neighboring towns do. On the Cape, 12 other towns, so 13 total, including Harwich, operate a similar grant program. The 12 others all do so with a Standing Human Services Committee. I would recommend that we follow the same model. I think that provides some continuity that the staff model doesn't offer. It would allow for more in-depth review of the applications and review of the programs themselves. And I think most importantly, it also provides the opportunity for public input. So with the staff model, there's really no, no public comment like we have in meetings like this. But the public could speak directly to needs, to the organizations and to the programs themselves. So I did also include a draft charge, kind of modeled off of what our neighboring communities include in their charges. So if you felt it was appropriate to create something similar in Harwich, that was some language for you to work off of.
Thank you, Emily. Other, there are questions, comments? Don?
Yeah, thanks, Emily. Appreciate it. But this goes under the category of everything old is new again. This started out as a committee. As a matter of fact, it started out as a committee when it went with Jim Noonan, when it went to town meeting, without it being budgeted. It was always there as an article they could allocate within. I'm not sure how it went totally to staff ultimately through the prior administration, but it's probably a wise idea. I know I, in my other life, have a lot of contacts through site law services. And they all do this through a committee. We're the only one that I know of that allocates through staff.
Thank you, Don. Ed?
Larry, if you remember, after Jim Noonan passed away and was no longer the driving force of rounding up people to serve on the committee, it fell to...
Tony Pagliaro.
Huh?
Tony Pagliaro.
Pagliaro, who kept the committee going for a couple of years. And then, single-handedly sat in on reviewing the grant applications for a couple of years before we voted to have the county office handle the advertising of the grant opportunity and consolidating the paperwork and helping with choosing the agencies that would receive grants. But if we have a new group of folks who are interested, I would rather have a local group doing the process. I think we get better results.
Thank you, Ed. And Michael, you had your, Don?
Well, Michael can go ahead. I just have one question about Ed.
Oh, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, again, on the other, on the consumer side, because I filled out those things for HESH for years. When it went to the county, it was a nightmarish process. Nobody controlled that.
Michael, did you have a comment?
No, just to say that I support the request. And, you know, I think we'd be best served by adding a mechanism in there where people can be appointed or town employees can be appointed if this committee turns out to be like a lot of our other committees that we're not populating. We heard from Waterways tonight. And I know a part of the reason that they had membership drop off was because of Zoom meetings. And I do think that as we get, finally get to the list of committees, we're going to find that we have a lot more holes than we think we have. So sometimes trying to fill committees is not easy. So I think in the, in the charge or however this finally gets written, that we leave room for Emily to be able to pick town staff if we don't have a full committee. I mean, I think that this would be a much better way to do it, but I think we should prepare maybe for the worst and be able to do both.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, Michael. Steve, did you wish to comment?
Sorry about that. I had it on mute. You know, I agree with the comments from, from Michael on this as well. So, you know, rather than be redundant.
With that, if there's no other comments, I entertain a motion.
Larry, before you actually do a motion, because Michael's on, I think Michael's right, but we should probably bring this back with a specific mix of people rather than, because we vote on it tonight, it doesn't actually give you a mechanism of who's part of this and what departments would be or...
And Larry...
I was thinking we could create with the caveat that Michael had on opening up the nominees, but the, you know, who we allow in the committee.
We always have problems when we do things in votum before they're actually finished.
Larry, I would only add that, you know, Emily put together a draft and I don't think any of us have given any feedback on the draft. And I know the membership piece of this should change a little bit to add the ability to have her pick town staff. So I don't know if board members would feel comfortable through Joe sending any thoughts they have on the charge. And now I think Emily's heard a little bit more from us tonight, so can alter that a little bit. I think by consensus, we could just simply say tonight that we support the creation of the committee, which would give Emily the ability to finish and us to comment and change and then vote a final draft once the final draft's done. I'll vote however you want tonight, because I'll vote to support it. But I think we should, we should just tell her that we support it and move on.
Either way, I want to, I want to leave this with a positive, positive motion or direction going forward.
Yeah.
I agree with Michael with the consensus.
I'm okay with the consensus if we bring it back. Emily, want to bring it back next week, two weeks?
I'm happy to bring it back at whatever, however you want to assess it and provide feedback. And I'll make those changes and get it back to you.
Okay, we'll leave it to Joe to look at the agenda then.
Michael, more comment, because Michael is so totally on target with this. The bigger this thing gets, the harder it remains to keep it populated with a quorum of people. I'm not sure how I feel about seven as much as five, because ultimately, you're going to find it, help to make sure that you got five people carrying this through during the whole year. Seven, not only, not only is it harder to get a quorum, but you're probably going to get nine opinions.
Okay. Emily, are you comfortable with five or do you think you need seven?
I am. So I based that decision on other towns. I think of the 12, probably 10 had seven members, a handful had nine, and maybe one had five. So I was really just pulling from our neighboring towns. I was borrowing heavily, but I see no problem with five in any way.
And in other committees, we've done five and then two staff members. So I, you know, and I maybe would defer to Joe on the staff member piece to work with Emily on that. But I think we could do the seven and do, you know, I know on the noise containment committee, we picked Cindy Williams from the chamber and we picked, I think, Charlene, the planner. And maybe that was the parking committee. But, you know, we have 60-something committees, so I want to keep this as simple as possible. Five or seven, I think I would leave that to Emily to think that through and to, and maybe do a mix. And then Joe, I would ask, how do you want us to submit our feedback on the proposed piece? And will you also submit your feedback based on what's been written in the comments tonight?
To the last point, certainly. And then I think the easiest way is just send me emails and I'll collate them. Megan and I will work with Emily. And I would just say, if we can't get it back on March 1st, because that is gearing up to be a big, big agenda. I think one of the things that, when Emily and I talked, Emily and her group are already in the process for this year. So we'd be looking, you know, for more of a transition, closing out this year's process and having some overlap with the new committee, for lack of a better word. So we've got, if I can say this, Emily, we've got a little bit of time to work on that, to finalize it, and then to work through the RFP presently and then get the next group set up to do the next year. And emails would be best.
Other comments? I think where we stand then is a consensus that we're all in favor of this. We'll work on a couple more details and bring it back to us. Okay?
Sounds good.
Next on the agenda is, Joe, I'll turn this over to you as well, so license.
Yeah, so this is an application. This would be a new Class 4 auto repair, what the state refers to as auto repairman. And staff has reviewed everything and you can see we have the sign-offs and staff is recommending approval.
Larry?
Yes, please, Michael.
I moved that we approved the new Class 4 auto repair license for A&amp;G Accident Repair, Inc., DBA Cranberry Collision, 161 Queen Anne Road, as submitted.
Second.
Second? There's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we'll move on to old business. And Joe, you're getting on, on this with the budget discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I've said in past meetings, this is the last opportunity for you as a board to make amendments to my proposed budget before it must be transmitted on to the Finance Committee, no later than close of business tomorrow. Also, following up on last week's discussion on this, I just want to highlight some of the items that I indicated would change and some of the items that may change based on input of the board. So first, you should have in your packet, and let me just confirm as I work off of my originals. So first, you can see the the document that we refer to as sources and uses. It gives a wrap-up, if you will, of a, of course, my screen just went blank. Bear with me, Mr. Chairman. Identifies the various sources. As I mentioned last week, there were a few changes that were going to happen. The first, you can see, as we go through the budget column, fiscal year '22. At the top, second line from the top is the local receipts. So that is factoring in the golf receipts projection to be at 1.8 million. And in the packet, you received backup from our Finance Director, provided through the Golf Director, that supports that information. And so if you look at page five of the document known as Town of Harwich Local Receipts, you can see the areas where there was changes. So under Golf Operations Revenue, snack bar concession was no change. Greens fee, that has been increased by an anticipation of 100,000. More coming in in Greens fee year-over-year. Driving range went up 15,000. Residents fee went up 50,000. Cart rental went up 50,000 for the net difference of 215,000, which goes from the 1.585 million to the 1.8 million. As you'll see in that page as well, you can see that the actuals that were coming in for the golf department, a projection of 1.8 million, while it is up from last year, is actually slightly lower than the ongoing average had been prior to the onset of COVID-19. So with that, I think it's an appropriate increase, estimated increase on the revenue, the local receipts. I'm going from memory here, but if I recall correctly, that line of local receipts went up from, yep, from 4.0% to now 5.8%. You can see that the overall difference on the net sources and uses is still, you know, in the lower range, but certainly far above the $302 that we were operating with before. I am going to pause, Mr. Chairman, and just ask a moment. Carol, I just ask you to confirm, I, I know that we had talked about changes in the assumptions on health insurance. And I can't recall, Carol, from our conversation, the Montmore Regional School District number, I know that they liked the Town of Harwich and the Town of Chatham was budgeting for a 5% increase. And we know that it went up 3% on Blue Cross, 2% on Harvard Pilgrim. Does that number on the updated sources and uses on line 26 reflect their assumptions on health insurance?
I have not received anything from the school district with regard to a voted budget for, for their bottom line. However, the meeting on February 11th suggested that they did make a reduction, but I have not received anything yet.
Thank you, Carol. So, Mr. Chairman, we were hoping to have that in place. But really, what you have in front of you, I think, is, well, certainly my last best effort in conjunction with Carol. And so at this point, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can walk through some of the questions that I've been receiving and some of the information the board... um, some of the questions that I've been receiving and some of the information the board, um, may wanna review before you get into potential amendments.
Okay, appreciate it, Joe.
Uh, thank you. So I'm gonna share my screen in a moment, um, but you may recall my original documents, uh, when I shared the, uh, what we call internally as the warrants page, um, and that's the, um, departmental operating budgets, uh, line by line, department by department. And so, um, you know, I I again had made the statement that, um, this comports, uh, in large part with the Selectmen's Directive on Level Funding. Um, I identified two areas where that was not the case, and that was because it would impact upon, uh, labor obligations, and that was in accounting and library. Um, hopefully you can see my screen now. I'm gonna scroll down. Um, I neglected to mention, uh, when I presented this, uh, the last time, uh, or for the first time, I should say, to the board, but I just wanna draw out that if you look under lines, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, and then seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four, um, I've told department heads that I'm sure many town meeting members, as I used to do back in the day, uh, would just draw our finger down that right side column to see what the percentage change was year over year in the budgets. And as you see, the vast majority of them are zero, if not lower. Um, but I wanna draw out what you'll see there on fire versus ambulance and EMS. So it looks like the fire department went up five percent, um, except when you recognize that below that, the, um, ambulance and EMS budget was actually subsumed within, uh, the fire department budget. And so, um, you can see a hundred percent decrease on ambulance and EMS, and, uh, that, that amount, um, calculates to a five percent increase. But again, that's factoring in the the merging of the two, uh, departments. Uh, then, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would just, uh, scroll down, uh, to the overall, uh, discussion point really for the, uh, total departmental budgets. Again, with your directive of level funding, uh, as I've explained, uh, oftentimes that under the, uh, Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue's definition of level funding, we have to account for the fixed costs, which, um, come later in this worksheet. Um, but the net effect, uh, for the departmental budgets, um, is a point six percent increase year over year, uh, and that certainly gets to the board's directive of, uh, no more than two percent. Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I believe I've covered, uh, the updates, and now we just, uh, return it back to you all, uh, for any questions or any discussions on potential amendments. And then, Mr. Chairman, lastly, what I would hope for is a vote of the board, um, after any amendments to direct me to send the final product to the finance committee, uh, by tomorrow, close of business in accordance with the charter.
Okay, the floor is open. Uh, questions, comments?
Um, Larry, Steve Ford, uh, as an overall general comment, uh, I just wanna say, uh, what a terrific job, uh, Joe and Carol have done here, uh, in responding to what the Selectmen have, have put out there as a challenge for this budget. So, uh, I I I think it reflects something much better than we've had in previous years, and, uh, uh, it it's terrific to have this team to help us find our way through this budget.
Don?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo Stephen. Uh, yeah, and it's gonna be a lot shorter. I'm not really used to being listened to. Thank you.
Uh, we'll, we'll go then. Uh, Michael, we'll listen to you.
Uh, uh, yeah, I'd echo, I'd echo the, uh, uh, Don and Steve's comments as well as as far as detail and and the listening part. Um, Joe, I I asked this question to you today, um, and it relates to the four percent, um, Airbnb tax. Can, I can't find that number. Has that number been rolled into what the actual revenue was for this year for the four percent increase in in tax for Airbnbs?
So, uh, thank you, and, um, thank you for the conversation today. I, rather than try to answer your questions straight up, I was hoping you would raise them again. Um, with regard to the hotel motel short-term rental, uh, the four percent that we have and we saw, uh, as many towns did, certainly on Cape Cod, um, a higher number come in on the short-term rental, uh, numbers that came in quarterly in September, they were, they were eye-popping numbers and they were, uh, higher than the traditional lodging numbers. Uh, my understanding is we were not relying upon those funds, uh, nor have they been earmarked, for lack of a better phrase. And so at present, um, those funds continue to go straight into the general fund. Um, as you, um, may have heard, uh, Selectman McManus, um, had stated at an earlier meeting, uh, and I have draft articles, um, specifically talking about, um, uh, potential increases in, um, hotel motel short-term, um, as well as an additional, uh, potential use of a community impact fee, and then, um, use that as a mechanism for this board to determine the use of those funds. Um, but I'm gonna try this. I've warned Carol that she may have to correct me. Um, but, uh, neither Carol nor I relied upon those funds, um, in the use of the preparation of this budget. And, um, we can certainly recommend what we think should be used for that going forward. And and as a quick aside, if I could, I meant to say this earlier, but, um, any uh, increase is probably not the right word. That's why I use the air quotes, but any money that we derive that was not present when I presented my budget, meaning, um, a beneficial difference in what we are projecting for health insurance, or, um, a beneficial difference when we hear that Chatham, um, may give, um, uh, some positive news on wastewater operating, whatever money quote-unquote becomes available, um, it it will be my recommendation to advise the board and recommend to finance committee that those funds be held aside, uh, perhaps so that we can rebuild our free cash for years in the future. And what I really mean to get at is I don't see any number of money coming up that anyone should get the idea that we can use that, that it's free money, found money, and that we should use that to impact, to change what the board has given directive on, uh, for foundation bu- uh, for, excuse me, level funding budget, um, and and to undo the budget. Um, little bit rambling there on the end, but, uh, no, we don't, uh, rely upon the, uh, hotel motel short-term rooms tax. Um, because it's not earmarked, it continues to go into general fund.
Thank you. Um, the, and and then going into general fund, Joe, does that end up into free cash or does that end up just staying in the general fund until we make a decision on what we're gonna do with it?
No, my understanding is, and and I'll look to our finance director, but my understanding is that, um, whatever we don't use gets carried into with a formula that we request for free cash certification, but I will absolutely defer to the finance director to correct that answer.
No, that's absolutely correct. And then it, free cash is certified for the general fund. So it does stay in the general fund, but it stays in the general fund as certified as free cash.
Okay, which, you know, traditionally the board then, um, buys capital items with, so I mean, I think that that's a conversation, um, that we need to take up sooner than later and make a policy, uh, especially if we're gonna be presented and maybe at the same time, if we're gonna be presented with adding another two percent. And and I know Don and I both questioned even the four percent, uh, when it came up before, because there was no target on where that money was gonna go. So Larry, as we, as we move forward on, um, budget conversations after tonight, I I would like to bring that back up and and maybe we do it as part of the proposed warrant article. Um, Joe, just for clarification, I picked up several blown-up copies of the budget today, uh, and it was given to me in a way where I'm looking at two different ones, one's from February fifth and one says February eighteenth. One says three point three percent total uses, and the other one says three point six percent total uses. Well, not total uses, total sources, so. It, what is the actual budget number? That, that's the easiest way to me, for me to figure this out. Overall budget number?
Sure. What I would recommend is if you draw your attention, uh, to the document, uh, in the footer that says two eighteen, twenty twenty-one, um, that is reflective of the, uh, revenue changes that I just mentioned with golf, um, so operating off of that document, um, because the previous one was the two thou- the, uh, February fifth was mine for your presentation. So, um, going down that right-hand column on the February eighteenth document, uh, total transfers in from other sources, uh, excuse me, total sources, uh, is that three point six percent increase. And and a portion of that is because of the, um, expanded, uh, estimates in golf receipts.
Thank you.
So that is the document that I would consider to be the most current, and that is the document that if you would have voted overall tonight would be transmitted to the finance committee tomorrow.
Okay.
So just for clarification, that, that shows up on the, uh, on the agenda as yes, may review, revenue, S revision document, rather than the budget overall.
Larry, I I went and got it printed in big words so that I could actually see it. It's time for an update on my glasses, and looking at my computer screen is not helpful. I gotta blow it up and then, and then I I I find it hard to talk wi- without looking at my little green microphone on. So the, um, looking at Carol, uh, maybe this question's for Carol, but looking at the, um, you know, some of the, the revenue, you know, the numbers, the numbers are, um, let's just take, uh, motel and hotel tax, last page motel and hotel tax, you know, we in twenty twenty had nine hundred and five thousand for twenty twenty-one, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, and then twenty twenty-two, re- projecting to seven hundred thousand. How how actual are these past year numbers and why such a fluctu- fluctuation? And I would extend that same conversation into, um, motor vehicle and boat excise tax. This has been a tremendous year for purchases, uh, more than, more than I think the country's ever seen, especially on boats. Are these projected numbers or are these actuals collected?
So for FY eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, those are actual numbers. For FY twenty-one, we were very conservative because we really didn't know, uh, what the market was going to, how the market was going to act. We didn't know how many, you know, hotels and motels would have full occupancy. We, we had no idea what your short-term rentals were going to come in at, but we obvi- we, again, did not even include those in our estimation. Um, as far as another area that maybe you hadn't mentioned, but I, I'll bring it up, um, meals tax. We reduced that significantly, um, because we weren't sure about the restaurant occupancy and and those numbers have come in low this year for the first two quarters. Um, as far as motor vehicles, again, for twenty-one, we didn't know what, what was happening in the market, whether, um, jobs were going to be, uh, prevalent, um, whether folks were going to be able to afford to purchase new vehicles, and so we were very conservative with those as well. Um, but, but before you, the, again, the FY eighteen, nineteen, and twenty numbers are actual numbers.
Okay, and given the conservative nature of these numbers, um, a- a- and then given, um, some of the incre- increased revenues we have seen in a, in a much better year than anyone thought we were gonna have, it's highly likely that there's some more money here.
It could be, yes.
Okay, and then, and then the, um, um, I know that we budgeted in two percent for, um, salary increases a- and and the board didn't support two percent, but that money was budgeted. What's the difference in that number now that, now that we are settling contracts at the one percent?
So the, the directive, and I'm not sure if town administrator wants to handle this.
Yeah, so, um, if I may, Selectman McCaskill, i- it sounded like you were asking about present year fiscal year twenty-one, where we didn't reduce, um, the built-in two percent. Um, so I guess, Carol, the question is where, uh, we've settled two contracts at one percent for this year. Um, would there be savings in the present year? Um, is how I heard your question, Selectman McCaskill, and then I think where the finance director was starting. Um, a- as you all know, I had suggested and told you that I was building in a zero percent increase for a cost of living, uh, or or the wage increase, if you will, um, across all, uh, contracts and across all employees for fiscal year twenty-two. So this budget is not only level funded, it does not allow for increases in wages. Now, there will still be the contractual step increases and other contractual obligations, but we factored in a zero percent increase.
I guess.
But what I heard your question was for, for this current year, what the net effect is, yeah.
That, that definitely answered most of my question that the, uh, I guess the part that isn't answered is there will be a savings from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two based on the decision that we made, and I would assume that money goes back into the general fund as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and I guess where I'm going with that and and the board, um, Don, I know that you've been part of these conversations with me. We've had, uh, pretty in-depth conversations about how much free cash we're generating, um, which ultimately ends up, um, it it ends up, um, with these budgets continuously going up, and then a large number in free cash, which, uh, you know, I think that for, uh, purposes of OPEB and and stabilization, I think that that some of that makes sense to consistently have one point seven to four million dollars, um, and to consistently have a budget increase of any percentage, um, outside of the directive of the board not to go over two percent. I think that this is a conversation that we need to relook at our free cash policy, um, and and to kind of determine how much money we 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 want to try and build. And and I know that there's a current policy, but for me, we are building a, a pretty significant free cash number every year. And then we're spending that pretty significant free cash number every year. So, uh, I'd like to have that conversation, Larry, future, um, as far, as as far as, uh, budget goes. Because, and and I'll close with this, and I thank you for letting me ramble on. Um, I haven't been part of the last two budget conversations. Joe got me up to speed today and and I did read a fair amount. But I I would close with, um, we did a great job, Joe, Joe, Carol, and the whole team did a great job on the budget so far. Um, this, Joe's mentioned now twice in this conversation that that we should vote this and it's, and it's our final, final. It's not our final. Our final is when we vote, vote the final budget after finance committee does their part, and we have, um, the budget hearings with department heads. And so we'll have another crack at whatever we want until we vote the final budget, correct, Joe?
Correct, and sorry for that misinformation. You're absolutely right. I'm relying upon my years in, um, government, state government, where this is the initial budget, it goes to the finance committee, and then you meet jointly, uh, several times.
And I know what you meant, so I'm not being critical on that. I just wanted.
No, no, it's a point well taken. Yep.
To know that that the board of Selectmen, we're not done with this.
Correct.
And and where I was going with the final piece, Larry, is, uh, and I did say it to Joe today, and I'll say it out loud again. We we are putting Band-Aids on a budget every year. We're, we're taking money from different places. We're filling holes. Um, we're not, um, you know, we we've, uh, reduced the cost of living. We've, there's a lot that we're doing. We're putting Band-Aids on them year by year, and our five-year forecast, whether we continue to do a five-year forecast or drop to a three-year forecast, um, we haven't seen that, and this Band-Aid approach to the budget a- and trying to come in at these numbers after, Don, I think it's eleven years, forty-four percent increase. It it's not, this is not gonna go well three to five years out. Three to five years out, we're gonna have to make a much more drastic decision on whether we're gonna increase taxes or downsize the town operation. A- and and I think for me, this is great and good information, but what are we gonna do three to five years out is a very important conversation. And and I know and appreciate how much Stephen's done with the, with the school. I think my point in that school meeting was, when are we gonna, um, realize that, uh, 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 once a year votes on whether or not Chatham wants to kick into our budget by paying for their elementary school, it's not gonna work for our taxpayers. And and to think that Chatham's gonna ultimately vote to give us five to seven hundred thousand a year for the next three to five years, and they're gonna support that, even on the town meeting level, is foolish. They're not gonna support that. So we need to start the process on letting somebody else on the state level get involved and say, is it okay that Harwich is ultimately gonna pay ninety percent and Chatham's gonna pay ten percent now, not a year from now, not five years from now. That, that conversation, um, because Chatham left with having, they're gonna have the conversation, but that's a one-year conversation. And then we're gonna do it again and again, and that's all gonna be board-dependent and town meeting participation, um, dependent. So my suggestion is, we start the process on figuring out, because that six hundred thousand six hundred thousand or five hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, Joe, for this year's budget, makes a huge difference to our taxpayers. A- and and next year's number being even larger makes a huge difference. So I I think the board needs to to get on with it. And and uh make up, it's gonna be a multi-year decision, not a not a year by year decision. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for that, Michael. Uh, good points. The uh, two quick comments, one on the free cash. Uh, it's very important. We did reduce that, I you see in seventy and twenty eighteen. Uh, that's an important discussion, as you point out. I think we also need to tie that into our capital plan. Cause some of that money we use for capital items and and continue to take a close look at our capital budget. The uh, we do have a agenda item next to look at the Montomoy. I do think that, uh, to your point, Michael, we need to desperately to send the message to Chatham for the Maytown meeting. And then we need a long-term fix. And so there's two activities going on, I think, with that, but uh.
La- Larry, and just on that, thank you for that, just on that, is it too late? And 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 maybe now, maybe we'll talk about it in a little bit when that comes up. Is it too late for a warrant article for our taxpayers to weigh in this year? Um, and not, you know, rely on a fall town meeting at a cost. Can't we get something on the warrant to to say, to basically spell out what's happening and let our voters act this year?
I think I turn to Joe, I my uh I would think we could, my question is whether we want to until the school committee gets back and see what their position is. I know they're working on, I think fairly, I think they're not entirely against our position and how we move on that. Uh, but we have to take action. Uh, Joe, I'll turn and give your opinion on that. And John, I haven't forgotten you, John, I'll get, we'll certainly ask you to weigh in.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Selectman McCaskill's question. Um, I I will always answer technically, yes. Um, the town meeting warrant first and foremost is a creation of the selectmen. You set the agenda, you can add to it, uh, the articles that you see fit. Um, the the rub comes in in this particular topic. Harwich could not conceive of a warrant article um that would impact upon the regional agreement solely. So um what I what I think I've heard you suggest is, there's any number of um articles that the board could create to gain a sense of where the public is at. But not um as it pertains to the regional agreement, uh as was being discussed by the working group. Uh, any changes to that require concurrence at both town meetings uh simultaneously. And requires prior approval by uh the Department of uh Early and Secondary Education or DESI. So yes, you could um use a warrant article to gauge the sentiment of the public. Um, to s- take certain other actions, but not to impact upon the regional agreement assessment process.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I think, and Don?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in because Michael used my name a few times, and I just wanna underscore that he's right. Uh, that I I do feel that way, that ultimately there's a number of things going on. Uh, even a policy would make me feel all that comfortable because uh through the years, I've seen certain boards have a little less discipline than other boards. Uh, it, I would really i- i- in order, the price for admission for me to actually start accepting anything more in rules taxes is tying it specifically to an obligation uh by the townspeople, in this case it'd probably be searing. Uh, cause like with inflation, you're probably talking over the life of that. They asked for about fourteen thousand people to pay about a billion dollars, and that's look very unrealistic. Uh, and one thing everybody keeps forgetting is, it's not just our taxes. Living here is just really expensive. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but with when your homeowner's insurance is is exceeding significantly what you're paying in taxes. That's still a cost of living to be here, it's a price of admission. So we ha- and Michael's right, we have to recognize uh that unless we wanna be the Hamptons, we're we're gonna have to figure out a way to rein things in so that we we adjust it in terms of obligations that are affordable, not in terms of uh grandiose things. It seemed to me like every opportunity we had over the last fifteen years to actually dump something into general treasury receipts uh the general fund and then spend it out like a teenager that has a ten dollar bill they don't know what to do with. I- it's a bad idea. We we need to be able uh to actually discipline ourselves so that if we get additional money, that was really the thought. People visit here and they have to pay their freight for what they do to uh the place. But that should translate into something tangible to the taxpayers who live here all year. It shouldn't just be, you know, for toys at uh town meeting time where we just have an abundance of free cash. We find ways to spend it, cause that's that's not really a sustainable way to operate.
Couple caller, my first, uh, Joe, a question. If we uh uh approve the uh budget tonight. What happens if we uh if uh we are able to reduce the amount of my expenses in that budget?
Larry, if I made before Joe answers, we're not approving the budget tonight, we're we're um approving the submiddle of it to the finance committee.
I I got that, yeah, thank you for that clarification, so we can change that. I just wanna be sure we could do that. You know, uh, regarding the uh the school, I'm hoping that uh our next agenda item is to look at the uh five hundred and seven thousand dollars. I'm hoping that we can uh, when we get to that agenda item, I'm speaking out of turn, that we uh come up with a strong motion requesting uh support from Chatham on that uh, that on that payment. I do think, Michael, you make a good suggestion on the agreement itself, to have a warrant article uh at town meeting on what the direction our boulders would like us to take. You know, on our school committee, there were at least three different options that were considered, that would be worthwhile.
Did we wait on that until we actually take action on this to refer it to PINCOM?
Wouldn't we can? I just was trying to set that up, I'd like to. I entertain a motion on this uh, on this budget.
Mr. Valentine.
Now, before we do that, uh Ed, I'm sorry, Ed, and then I forgot John, I wanna be sure I bring John Torey in here. Ed, if you let me bring John in, cause then you may be ready for a motion. John, you asked to speak before, I think, on this or on the schedule.
All right, pushed the wrong button here. Uh, what I had asked to speak to uh Larry was the department head meetings that we traditionally have.
Okay.
You know, in March, but I'll just make a quick comment on this budget, that I think Joe's done a tremendous job on on what he's been tasked with to do. And uh I think we'll, once we get the budget, once the schools uh vote on their budgets, they haven't voted yet. Uh, Cape Cod Regional is is voting uh uh on February twenty fifth. Uh, I mean Cape Cod at the tech school is voting on the twenty fifth and and Montomoy is voting on the eleventh. Uh, from what I've heard or seen, their budgets may be going down just on a budget level. So uh, excellent job, you know, more work ahead of us, but I just wanted to speak to that department head meeting, which I think and my committee thinks it's a very important meeting to have, so that's it. Thank you, Larry.
Joe, do you wanna talk about that now during our budget discussions?
Certainly. This round robin effort, uh typically it was a Saturday day-long event. Uh, and and it will never be lost on me that, um, you know, in hindsight, it was merciful that our March seventh event didn't become what we now know are super spreader events. But, you know, that was the last major meeting we had where the full board of selectmen, the full finance committee, uh many staff members such as Carol and I uh in that room with many people from the public and department heads there. So the question remains, I um, is there a desire to continue that process? And I think, I know there is um from administration, from the department heads. And I believe the same, i- if I can speak for John, is true of his committee. So really, for me, the question is the mechanics by which we do that. Um, there is, there is no going back this year to what we uh skated by with last year. So it would be um a rather time-intensive and go-to-meeting-driven exercise. And so I was um hoping to build a plan, but what I was able to come back with is um, staff is ready, willing and able to modify schedules if we wanna do it um over a series of days. And my emphasis would be on the word day. Um, you know, mindful that we used to do a full Saturday, it will still be broadcast on channel eighteen. Um, it will still have, the public will still have ample opportunities uh to engage in the discussion either as it's happening or on replay, either on YouTube or on channel eighteen. So really, the question for the board is, how would you direct me to proceed on that? Um, would you like me to try to develop um say, two or three, three-hour um efforts uh to break it up over time? Um, but what I'm talking about would be uh after the week of the first, so mindful that you may have some big selectmen's meetings coming up on Monday evenings, mindful of potential hearings uh that would come up on a Monday, which would force the board to meet on a Tuesday. Um, this is our busiest year, this should be our busiest effort, but um that's gonna swallow up quite a bit of March.
Could we do a couple uh Saturday mornings?
Um, I think we can do that as well, if we broke it up on the weekends as well, I think that's possible.
I'm looking for uh comments, I think it's a worthwhile meeting.
I I think the the fact that the staff, the town administrator and the finance committee wants to have it uh speaks volumes and that we should have it for that reason alone. Uh, a- and you know, it will prove to be challenging this year. Um, given the way we're gonna have to do it, and I would agree that we should split it up, do one Saturday with fifty percent and the next Saturday with fifty percent. Um, I think that because that that there is gonna be timer strengths. I don't think just because we have go-to meeting, there's gonna be more questions. And and the way that I've seen this the last three years is there's actually very few questions because committee members, board members do not ask the same question. Um, so it's it's a limited amount of questions, it's more of a presentation and a plea from the staff. Uh, but I I do think it will take some more time, that that wa- that way, I would ask that we would split it into two Saturdays. Uh, and then just make it work. Yeah, that's that's my comment.
Thank you, Michael.
I would agree with Michael.
Okay, Ed, thank you, Steve.
I agree with Michael.
Don? So I'm bored, John, how's that sound to you?
That that sounds perfect, Larry, and and I agree, it's 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 much more challenging this year with the COVID and the go-to meetings and stuff. But uh, it does uh provide us, the finance committee, to to meet with some of these department heads uh and learn about their budgets and 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 have Joe there and Carol there to uh to fill in, fill in the blanks for everyone. So thank you all, and thank you all, selectmen, for uh seeing uh that would make this meeting happen.
Uh, Joe, I'll turn it back to you.
Um, thank you. What I'd like to do then is um, uh looking at the calendar, and I must admit, I'm not mindful of, um, I did not check religious calendars. Um, but if there was an ability to do uh say Saturday, March sixth and Saturday, uh March thirteenth. Um, I could at least start working with staff tomorrow to try and identify uh the groups that we would um balance off for those two dates. And um, you know, the thought just occurred to me, whenever we're planning this, we're always trying to factor in um weather delays. Um, at the risk of jinxing us, I would suggest that um, there's very little that could get in the way of our go-to meeting.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, uh, I am, I I mentioned earlier, I will not
Oh, right.
On the sixth, that's that's
Sorry.
Um, a- and I apologize for that, but I can't change that.
No, I apologize, you had said that. So what I'm what I'm motivated by is, I'm just looking at the uh the mandated timeline. And so really, the good news is, is there's um no charter mandated activities that would happen um before the twenty first, so, uh, excuse me, or the twenty second. So it could work out that we do um March thirteenth and um March twentieth. And and again.
Yeah, the twentieth is tough for me. I have other commitments. Could we do, I, could we do the sixth and the twelfth? Or excuse me, the thirteenth and the uh nineteenth, say, do a Friday and Saturday, week apart.
I I don't see a problem with that happening.
And Joe, just as a matter of timing, the the um, you know, we have some larger departments that take longer. And then we have some smaller departments that take a short amount of time. And I and I do think we probably uh on a, on another weeknight, if it worked better, uh whether it be a Friday or a Tuesday or a Wednesday. We could, we could knock out a fair amount of in a two-hour meeting, the smaller departments and the smaller budgets.
Sure.
And and leave that open Saturday for the longer ones.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Larry, could I make that just a a quick c- uh observation? Joe, this is directed to Joe. Uh, Joe, how, if we meet uh on the twentieth, how does that impact, you know, the budget timeline for us as a finance committee to get written recommendations? They only gives us two days.
I'm trying to get back to my calendar here to look at the requirements. Uh, well, I I think what I, what I heard just a moment ago is um, and building off of what Selectman McCaskill said, you know, I I think it is uh, well, I, let me go back to my notes, I think, Selectman McCaskill, you said you would be out of pocket the fifth through the eighth, correct?
We could do the twelfth and thirteenth, Joe.
Sorry.
There you go.
I'm planning on attending the eighth, but I am, I am gone the fifth, sixth and seventh, out of uh cell reach and communication.
Sure, what I was suggesting is we could do uh smaller departments on three eight um as part of your regular meeting. Um, and then three twelve and three to thirteen, if that works. So one Monday evening, one Friday during the day and one Saturday during the day.
Okay.
And Chairman Troy, that gives some help for you and your board.
Yeah, uh, uh, Joe, you're you're good at parliamentary stuff here, and that's a compliment, Joe. Uh, looking at the timeline, it says March twenty second, finance committee submits written recommendations on budgets and articles. Uh, and then if you go away to the right, it says March thirty first, what does that, how does it, those two dates cor- correlate, do you know?
Sure, if I remember correctly, let me just scroll up, thank you. Uh, and by the way, I took that as the ultimate compliment. Um, uh, let's see here. So the the target date, uh that column of the thirty first, so um, and it's really working back to the other dates. If I remember the charter citation uh directly, it is um that before the end of uh the month. Well, sorry, let me back up again. Looking at that calendar, um you have to complete that before the end of the month. So that's where March thirty first comes in. But recognizing that we need to get warrants to the Chronicle on the printer uh by Tuesday, the thirtieth. Um, that's why I recommended, while the target is the thirty first, it was more likely that we would wanna give ourselves the till the twenty second. So what I'm suggesting is, there's a lot of things in play here. That charter requirement for your recommendations gets to that the finance committee must make your recommendations before it gets printed or committed to print. Uh, because if you don't have your recommendations, then it changes the quantum of vote. Uh, it goes to a two-thirds vote and a straight majority. So the the date of the twenty second was the planning date. Knowing that we need to get it to the Cape Cod Chronicle uh into J and R Graphics no later than Tuesday, March thirtieth. That's why I established your deadline of March twenty second. Now, I also do that to tie into board meetings, but we could also build it around specifically the finance committee's meetings. It, but it couldn't be later than the thirtieth to the printer.
Okay, uh, thank you, Joe. What I, what I think I'll do is, maybe I'll give you a call tomorrow, something we can talk about.
Sure, okay.
The the dynamics of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
That sounds good.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanna make sure that um a portion of departments on Monday evening, March eighth. Uh, and by that, I mean if for some reason, there is an applic- well, the wouldn't, the application wouldn't apply, never mind. Let me say that again, Monday evening, March eighth, for some of the smaller departments. Let me say that again, Monday evening, March eighth, for some of the smaller departments. Friday morning, March twelfth and Saturday morning, March thirteenth, would be the target dates for the remaining departments. And trying to balance out the bigger groups among those two days during the daytime. Is that a good sense of the board?
I, I think so, I see no one raising hand to object, so let's, let's work with that. Okay, we need to go back and have a motion to move the budget to the finance committee.
Yes, I'd move that we approve the budget that was submitted to us tonight as our what do we call it, our
Initial submission.
Starting place.
An initial sub- yeah, referral.
Initial referral to the finance committee.
Second.
Second, other discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, I'm an I, Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the Montmore that we referred to briefly before, and I I think we, Joe, I guess I'll turn this to you, but my, my hope is tonight, we come up with a, some document that informs the Montmore Chatham of our desire for them to help on this, so I'm, what we're calling in some cases, a subsidy, not everyone likes that term. And then, I'm not, don't think we, we need to address the overall agreement at this point, because there are a lot of people working that language, and we brought that up a little bit, but, yeah, I'll turn that to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board, as you recall, you all participated in the, the tri-part meeting of the Harwich Board of Selectmen, the Chatham Select Board and the Montmore Regional School Committee on Wednesday, February tenth. To do a, a deeper dive into the, the present situation of the assessment. As, as many have said, the, the chasm grows wider to the detriment of, I think all parties would agree to the town of Harwich, and more importantly, the taxpayers in Harwich. And recognizing that that is a function of the assessment mechanism, you had that, that lengthy meeting on February tenth. We know that the regional school committee is going to take this up again, and we expect that the Chatham Select Board, following that, following any potential action by the school committee, would spur both the Chatham Select Board and the Harwich Board of Selectmen to, to then take reactive action, if you will. However, this board had expressed a desire to revisit, as a Harwich Board of Selectmen, not only, but for you all, the five of you, to engage in a discussion on where we are from there. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was one of the first people to use and probably an imprecise term of subsidy. So I'm with you on that, and, and, and I'm going to correct myself and endeavor to get a better word for that, because it does denote that there is a sense here that the town of Harwich, through either financial difficulty or any other reason that others could ascribe to us, the reality is, this is not because Harwich is in poor condition, and this is not because we don't have our financial house in order, in fact, I think this board has been very clear, certainly for me, and it has allowed Carol and I, the finance director and I, to be very clear to our departments about what we're looking for. We're looking for a more rational approach to how we build our budgets, and, you know, I, I will defer mostly to what Selectman McCaskill said earlier this evening. So for, for anyone else to call this a subsidy, or that the town of Harwich is looking for help, that's not the case. It's a recognition that there is a, a growing chasm in what was intended to be the assessment formula and the assessment percentages, and so the net effect for fiscal year twenty-two is about five hundred seven thousand dollars, and that, if I remember this correctly, represents the delta between how much more Harwich's assessment went up and how much more Chatham's assessment went into the negative. And so it's not a handout, it's not a subsidy, it is a disconnect in the assessment process. And so that's why what you have on your agenda this evening, that language was actually taken directly from the agenda for that tri-party meeting on February tenth. And it was, again, a request of the board for you to be able to have a substantive discussion as the five of you on behalf of Harwich. And then we recognize, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that the regional school committee, perhaps as Chairman Shory has mentioned, in the process of them finalizing their budget process, we, we look to them to take some corrective action that can then be considered by both boards in Chatham and Harwich.
Don, are you, Don?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to follow up on what you guys were saying, and frankly, there is a subsidy involved here, but it's not them subsidizing us. You've got a school right now, which is a building that has overhead in it, you've got an administration for that building that only has one classroom running in each of the grade levels. If anybody's subsidizing anything, it would be Harwich subsidizing the luxury of having a school that only has one grade per, per level, I mean, one classroom per grade. That's, that's really crazy, frankly, and I understand that the agree, what the agreement said, but I don't think the agreement contemplated, and Michael's right, but this can't be a one-off discussion every year. I said it during that meeting, this is a problem that's only going to fester, because once those kids get to the point where they're out of the elementary school and in the middle school process, the ever, ever dwindling enrollment in Chatham is going to become part of our obligation in terms of the, the funding formula, and that was never contemplated, ever. And I, I disagree about a Warren article of any sort, because frankly, to get recommendation, frankly, I am totally prepared to vote against their school budget, unless something breaks, because this is not, it's not, it's a question of fairness, not a question of subsidy.
I'm, again, I'm hoping tonight, I, I agree, we need a long-term fix, I'm hoping tonight, we can arrive at a motion that signals and informs Chatham that we request their aid, if you will, relief or financial support of the five hundred seven thousand dollars to con- continue the payment of the, the elementary, high, elementary schools.
So moved. Joe can word it better.
Okay.
I would second that, Larry, because honestly, this, something's got to happen now, taking no action whatsoever is an action, because it puts, it punches a hole in our budget. They need to recognize, I don't begrudge the, the taxpayers of Chatham, if they want to be able to have their own elementary school, that option. We're not saying close the school, but we're saying, if you want to keep it open, and it's truly a burden on the relationship between Harwich and Chatham, we'll pay for our school, you pay for yours, until they're blended in the middle school. That's not a handout, that's just a recognition that if you choose to keep that open, knowing the overhead costs to do that, then you should bear those costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we need, we need to get the key members on that board to take this more seriously. You know, they're, they're, they're trying to roll it out another year and hopeful that the process takes quite a while. You know, it, yeah, I, I, I agree with, with Don and Michael, I mean, this is a, this is a situation we can't just let go by this year. And I said that to them when I was in the subcommittee meetings, and got, you know, a rather half-baked answer to it. But I think it is a good idea to send our sentiment to them that we're, we're not just going to sit by on this. That we want them to address this in a serious fashion, and if they don't, you know, then, then we, we need to figure out what we're going to do.
Thank you, Steve. Ed, you have a comment?
You know, it's, I, the, the, the growing problem that's being basically caused by the diminishing percentage of the student body coming from Chatham. It, it's sort of, it's surfacing with the issue of the high, of the elementary school. But as Don indicated, as that those cohorts of children move into middle school and into high school, it's, it's just going to magnify. And, and, you know, the, I guess the basic issue is that when we joined the two, this, two school systems, we figured, you know, for each town alone to carry a school program, there's certain built-in costs that aren't swayed one way or another by the number of students you have, you know, you have to have insurance and you have to have buildings and you have to have a variety of staff that aren't keyed to how many classrooms you have, they're, they, they just need to be there to serve the whole district, and as we, as a student body in Chatham Falls, more and more of that base cost is being shifted to Harwich, and, and that needs to be segregated out at some, in some fashion, and the actual costs that are per pupil based, then needs to be assessed on that basis.
Joe, we have a motion in a second.
Larry, one quick, Larry, one quick comment? I, I said enough on this earlier, so I won't speak a lot about it, and, and I think everyone knows where I stand, I will stand with Don on a no vote on their budget as it stands now, and as much as I appreciate Scott, Dr. Carpenter and the school committee coming forward with this problem and supporting the town of Harwich, it's irrelevant to me. We, we have watched increases and increases and increases over the years with a promise, and that promise hasn't come to fruition, and, and at some point, and, and I believe last year, they didn't have the support of the board of selectmen either. But this year, I will absolutely, the way it's being presented, vote no on the school budget. And, and at some point, Larry, as I said earlier, the hand has to be forced, you can't afford an elementary school unless your taxpayers afford it and, and, and vote for it, the town of Harwich cannot continue to pay for their elementary school. And the regionalization, great idea, the language, we probably should have thought about this one, one, because we didn't regionalize that long ago. And as this compounds, and Harwich is paying ninety percent of the school district, and Chatham houses are selling, you know, on the low end for one million, and their assessments continue to climb, they're not going to get school-age kids, and the burden is going to continue to shift to Harwich. And we need to take the stance now, and we need to take, take a strong stance now, and let the, let the other players get involved. Meaning the state, meaning the school committee, meaning if the town of Harwich and our voters don't approve the budget, it's going to force the hand anyway. So I, I, I just want to say that, as it stands now, and, and I appreciate the school committee and, and Dr. Carpenter, this budget, we, this budget is going to hurt us, and, and Chatham does need to step up, and they didn't save us thirty-eight point five or thirty-eight point seven million on a high school either. We could have gone it alone, and, and the same programs were available from, for, on financing on the building, so I don't believe for a second that we saved thirty-eight point seven or eight million, as one of the selectmen mentioned last week in the meeting, two weeks ago in the meeting. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Michael, I think, Joe, we can work on this message, we have a motion in a second to send the message to Chatham that we we need their relief, if you will, or whatever the term is, just work on that.
We need their action this year.
Consideration.
Yeah, we, but we need action this year, that's
That's right.
I agree.
We all agree with that. Is there more, there's been a motion in a second then, take a roll call, Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
I'm an I, so Joe, we'll, we'll send the message, and we, and they clearly, if they listen to this at all, they clearly know what our sentiment is, is behind that, so.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Chairman members.
Moving to the next agenda item, is Joe, is the ongoing discussion on the CWMP?
So potentially, as a gift to everybody, you'll see that it's a repeat of the last agenda you had, and there's several reasons for that. Two of which were that two-fifths of the group spent a part of last week sledding with their kids. So we had staff impacted by the short week last week, the, it repeats this week to just remind the board your discussion with us last week, we continue to work on it, we'll be bringing updates on these as you've asked from last week. Now that we have more time to dive into that, and also that we will be coming forward in future for a broader calendar, for lack of a better word, of key topics that we'll have going forward. One of the things that we discussed, the group of five, we had a regular meeting today, and I've indicated that there are going to be some standalone articles related to potential funding mechanisms, I mentioned certainly the one that Selectman McManus has identified, and that's certainly one of them. But those items may become topics under this standing agenda item as a way for you to, to vet the merits of these articles, so we will follow up on the revision strategy for CWMP and come back to you with the deliverables that you gave us last week.
Okay.
But on behalf of the group of five, that represents the entire conversation we're prepared to have this evening on those matters.
Okay, good, now, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, as we are, the other three selectmen are not totally aware of all these comings and goings, Michael's pointed this out in the past, but as we are having the DHY meeting again on Friday, I just want to state publicly that we are nowhere near voting the final position on this board, because it hasn't been discussed. So what we talk about on Friday is, there's nothing new to report.
Yeah. Agreed, okay. Town administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, through you and the board to the, to the licensees, as I mentioned before, the seasonal liquor license process, those packet materials have been assembled, they'll be mailed out the end of the week, and that's to guard against the ABCC's strict requirement that no forms be signed other than in the month of March. So we're just alerting all of the seasonal liquor license holders that materials will be mailed out to all of them Friday afternoon. And then, Mr. Chairman, as we receive them, we'll be bringing them before the board for your standard renewal, and again, for the benefit of the general public, as you know, seasonal liquor licenses run from April first through January fifteenth, so we will be having that process kick up again in March.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, selectmen's reports, Michael?
Standby, Larry, I just wanted to refer to an email that you sent to the board today.
Yep.
Okay, wastewater build-out was the title of the email. So I just wanted to thank you for your time, clearly that took some time, in assembling that document and, and kind of as a refresher, and I think, you know, as we have concerned citizens, I think we, you know, we share as much of that information as we can, but it was, it basically an overview of what we've been discussing, and I think what Joe just mentioned, what's coming back to us over the following week, so thank you for that information. The, I know I requested several things related to the budget for future agenda items, free cash, I would add to the agenda if we could, and, and this was a controversial topic when it came up, it's not a controversial topic, in my opinion, anymore, because there's a pending lawsuit on, on the road that was controversial. That a Warren article is needed, whether it's this year or next year, on taking the county roads. The county doesn't own roads anymore, and Selectman Howell The county doesn't own roads anymore and Selectman Howell pointed out that the town never accepted the roads from the county. But it's, it's, it's a common knowledge that the county does not own roads anymore. And we have several county roads in the town of Harwich. I believe Route 39 is one of them. And we have not accepted those roads as a town. And, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong when, when the topic comes up. But I, I do think that we should accept the roads from the county so that we don't have to have that conversation ever again. The town of Harwich owns the town of Harwich roads other than the private roads. And the, and the other would be, I would, I would ask to have a, a conversation about petition articles, Larry. You know, specific for me at least in banning things. And, and I would like to have the conversation on whether or not it's legal or not legal for those to go to the ballot and be approved at the ballot. And I think given COVID-19 right now and, and lack of participation in town meetings, it would make sense to me at least to get a, a wider number of people to weigh in on some of these petition articles and, and let the townspeople at the ballot decide whether they support it or not. So those are two conversations that I'd like to add to agendas in the, in the near future if we can. But if we can, I understand that we have a lot of work to do.
Thank you, Michael. I, I think the two last ones, petition and the petition, those articles, Joe, we probably need to get some legal guidance on what our, how much authority we have on all that.
Sure. If I may, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, at, at the risk of making this sound easy, I will say that the mechanism for road takings is rather simple given how well it's been laid out by the Commonwealth over the years. So it is possible that that could appear in your draft warrant throughout the process in March for this town meeting. And, and then the regarding petition articles and what Selectman McCaskill had added, that certainly does warrant a, a broader discussion. While the town cannot ban or prevent petition articles, I will suggest that there are a number of tools that municipal governments can use to counter the effects of them so that the town meeting has a chance to consider proposals. And so I think that could have a broader discussion. There's a joke in there about my dog being tired. But I, I think that's a bigger discussion and that is something that could lead to substantive action in a future town meeting. But I think those could happen this year.
Don?
Yeah, apparently one of our members does have a dog in the hunt. Anyway, to the first subject that Michael brought up, I just want to say, right? I didn't spend a long time on the email, but there is a tautology, a closed loop in that that concerns me. It references the comprehensive wastewater management plan as being a rationale for growth. But the comprehensive wastewater management plan itself assumes things that we're trying to get at, whether or not they're still current assumptions. So before we start using something that has assumptions in it to create, to assuage other discussions that have assumptions in it, we need to go back to the beginning because I've said this before, there is no way if, that you can make an assumption about growth for a village center when it's been seven years since that statement has been made and there's been actually no movement whatsoever to bring it to a town meeting. And I'm not even sure it would pass even if there were. So it really needs to be where, where we left it before the email. That they've got to take a clean sheet of paper and see where we are, what the zoning is and what that growth looks like, given the zoning we have. Because the comprehensive plan is going to be revised. And I dare say when it goes to a town meeting, if we told them there's a linkage between, we want you to include some robust growth in this, oh, and by the way, that'll cost you this much for sewer-ing, I don't think that passes town meeting. So assumption can't be that we, we can throw in the possibility of something that's not even on the horizon.
I put that together, Don, because I wanted to give us some ideas of what the discussion's been in the past. If you read it, I mentioned periodically, the way it faces in there, that these all need to be reevaluated and, and discussed.
But I took that as something to guide the gang of five in their discussions. I'm just saying that when you're reading that email, just remember, there is no zoning change contemplated at the moment. And that's what they, they take the 40% that we were looking at.
And that's why, okay, I've tried to explain that in the email, in the, in the attachment. Steve?
I got nothing.
Ed?
He's walking the dog.
Ed's out keeping the dog.
I'm fine.
Okay, good.
And we do.
And, and I have nothing more tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second. Roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
All right.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Thank you, Joe, and good evening, y'all.
Good night, folks.